Welcome to the superintendent's hangout where we discuss topics in education, charter schools, life in general, and not necessarily in that order. I'm your host, Dr. Shoretta. Come on in and hang out. In this episode, I was privileged to sit down for a third time with Richard Barrera. He currently holds the record for the most appearances on this podcast. Richard is a longtime colleague and friend of mine, and just a very balanced and keen analyzer of politics, society, education, and a lot more. Richard and I talk about potential cellphone bans in schools, the pros and cons. We talk about the role of AI. We talk about gun control. We talk about the role of political will and a lot more. I hope you enjoy this episode as much as I did in having this conversation with Richard Barrera. Welcome, Richard. Thank you so much for coming back for our third, for a repeat.
I know. My God, David, you gotta, you're sick of me.
Never, never. Since we've covered kind of your bio in previous episodes, and folks can go back and check that, those episodes out. We are starting a new school year.
Yeah.
2024, 25, which is hard to even say. What's new in San Diego Unified, where you're, you're a longtime trustee? What's new? What's exciting? What should we keep, be looking out for?
I mean, I, you know, we hate to use the term moving back towards normal, but the further that we get away from the pandemic, the more that I think, you know, the opportunities for kids to be a little bit more prepared when they come into school, the relationships that teachers can have with students. It just gets better, you know? Nobody really has their finger on, you know, the causes of chronic absenteeism. And we know that we're still above where we were pre-pandemic, but we're also, you know, about half where we were a few years ago. So it's like, the further that we get away from the pandemic, I think the more opportunity for the core of what makes school great, which is those relationships between students with each other and between students and their educators. So I'm, I'm, I think we're gonna have a great year, and, and I think it's gonna be a better year than last year, and probably next year will be a better year than this year.
Talk to me a little bit about the budget. I know, you know, Voice of San Diego kind of tracks that pretty closely, and they were following the hard work that you folks did in the spring to avoid massive layoffs. But you're still projected to have a deficit. And I know there was some, some spending down of reserves. So where, where, or I'm not, maybe I'm mischaracterizing.
No, 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 I bet, and it's, it's, it's a fair characterization. Although I would say, you know, this is my 16th year on the board.
Right.
And every year, good economy, bad economy, relatively good state budget, relatively bad state budget. When we look out a year or two years, we project a deficit.
Right.
And, and then we go through the whole process where, of course, the state budget keeps changing. But our own, you know, analysis of our costs also, you know, gets sharper as we go on over the course of the year. And so, you know, what we always project is that for the, for the budget that we pass for the upcoming year, we're gonna spend down to our minimum required reserves. So we always do that.
Right.
So we never budget something that has, we never plan for a budget that has reserves above the minimum required reserves. And yet, we always get to the end of the year, and then we've got, you know, some money that we can then apply to the next budget. So.
So you're not trying to build reserves?
We never try to build reserves. And, you know, I know that, you know, from a, just sort of a pure financial planning situation, I can understand where people would say, well, it's better if you, if you build reserves. But of course, what that means for, for us in a state that severely underfunds public education is if we kind of just put money in the bank and don't spend it, that means a second grader is not getting what they need.
Right.
You know, so we are always gonna, you know, the state's gonna give us the amount of money that they give us for that year. We're gonna spend it on the kids, and then we'll deal with the budget, you know, crisis the next year. So this is, this will be, you know, for me, going into budget number 17.
Right.
And it's always a problem, you know, at this time. The one thing I can guarantee is we'll figure it out. What that ends up looking like, you know, is gonna take a lot of work between now and the spring.
I think some of that discussion when, when the, when Sacramento balances the budget and they talk about depleting the rainy day fund.
Yes.
I think there's a psychology that comes into play when we talk about spending down, something that you've kept in your little box there. I mean, we're talking about billions of dollars, but.
That's right.
But there's something that's a deficit mentality, right? When you talk, or negative mentality.
Yes.
There's this thing that it's always more painful to lose money than it is. The pain of losing money is greater than the joy that you get from, from getting a raise.
Getting something unexpected, yes.
Exactly, right, like a windfall.
Yeah.
And so maybe part of it's that too, where, where districts get characterized as, oh, you're depleting your reserves. So I think it.
Well, the state rainy day fund is a great point, David, because as you know, when, you know, when I started for several years, there was no state rainy day fund. And so the fact that the state socks away money, you know, which is again, helpful, you know, in, in, in down years. But that's, that's our money that it's socking away, you know? So when people say, well, where's your reserve? Well, that's where it is in the state rainy day fund. It just means they're putting less out to school districts, which means less money going out to classrooms in order to, to build that reserve.
Yeah, it's, well, it'll be interesting the next couple of years, right? I mean, I think the only thing we know about school finance in California is that it, it's so impossible to predict.
You can't.
The swings are drastic, and we're at the, at the vagaries of, of a small group of really wealthy individuals too.
That's right.
That's the other part of it.
That's right. Yes, you know, that what's different about this budget crunch as compared to, you know, for instance, during the recession. Okay, during the recession, the economy was in bad shape and it was contracting. And when the economy contracts, the state revenues contract, and you understand why there is a deficit. In this case, the economy has been expanding steadily. And then we see things like, you know, what we saw last week, this, you know, kind of, you know, one day downturn in the, in the stock market, which could have enormous impact on the state budget. But then the next couple of days, it was a huge turnaround. So you're exactly right. Anybody, one of the smartest watchers of the California budget that I know, Steve Peace, who was a state senator for many years and was actually the, the budget director, the budget director under Jerry Brown. He, what he told me one year was, just watch car sales, and that'll tell you everything you need to know about the state budget. So if car sales are up, it's gonna be a good budget year. If car sales are down, it's gonna be a bad budget year. Now, that was 10 years ago, so I don't know if, you know, that relationship is. But, you know, for somebody like that who could find one variable and, you know, boil it down, you know, is interesting because it's, it is a very, very difficult thing to predict the, the state budget.
For folks who are not involved in leading in a school district or in a charter school context, they don't really understand that, just the incredible myriad of competing interests that come into play when you're talking about budget planning.
Yes.
What, what's one thing that an outsider does not understand about the job of a school board member, the life of a school board member, the, the daily responsibilities of a, of a school board member?
I mean, first of all, I think, you know, the, the public has every right to, you know, expect a lot out of school board members, you know? We know it's, it's a part-time job. It's, you know, you don't have staff, all those kinds of things that, you know, school board members, you know, kind of whine about. But, but it's an enormous responsibility. And when we put our hands up to the voters and say, we want that responsibility, the voters and the community has a right to expect a lot back. But yeah, I would say it's maybe one, you know, big issue that's not as well understood is 80% of the money for school districts comes from the state budget. So we don't have that independent ability, you know, to, like, we can't just raise taxes. We can't just raise revenues. So we can only work, you know, with the money that we get from the state. And so when people, you know, often say to us, which they're absolutely correct, how come our class sizes are too big? How come we don't have enough, you know, paraeducators, you know, aides for students with special needs? How come we don't have enough investment in arts and music and science and all those things? That is right, but that is not because the school board deprioritizes, you know, those issues. In fact, I, you know, I believe that our board, you know, at San Diego Unified over many, many years, has shown our priorities in the form of the decisions that we make for the budget. We had during the COVID years, the only time that I've been on the board, the kind of revenue coming in that allowed us to expand a lot of, you know, programs that always should have been expanded. But it was one-time money that came from the federal government, you know, for purposes of helping, you know, schools get past COVID, and now it's gone. And, you know, like you and I have talked about in the past, it's a shame that it took a pandemic to bring the kind of resources that schools actually do need. And it's a shame that now that we're, you know, out of the pandemic, those resources are gone. But the federal government, you know, where all that, you know, money came from during COVID, federal government continues to dramatically underinvest in special education. Feds are supposed to fund 40% of the cost that a school district spends on special education. They've never been above 15%. They severely underfund, you know, Title I and the programs that are supposed to, you know, support students whose families are in economic distress. Never come close. They don't fund military kids to the degree that they're supposed to. So, you know, we had that one moment, and those couple of years were the only time in, you know, the 16 years that I've been on the school board, that we weren't dealing with huge budget, you know, questions. And now that federal money is gone because, you know, we're beyond COVID, but the needs of our kids haven't gotten any, haven't changed in any way. In fact, they've gotten, you know, more severe.
For one fleeting moment, we were, we were Massachusetts.
That's, that's right. And it felt.
Or New York or something, right?
Yeah.
Because there are funding models in other states that are different, right?
Oh, you know, my, my son went to college in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and his, his roommate, his parents were involved in the public school system there, and they spent $30,000 per student. And they would say things like, you know, money's not our issue. Well, that would be nice, you know, because we don't even have half of that, and money is our issue.
Yeah, and I think you and I spoke about this in previous podcasts, that the political will is just not there to change that funding model in California, even around the difference between average daily attendance and even enrollment.
Yes.
Which certainly doesn't solve all the issues, but it's something.
There are seven states in the country that fund schools based on this, you know, combination of enrollment and attendance. Every other state funds based on enrollment, which makes all the sense in the world because if a kid misses a day of school, that doesn't mean you, as a district, cannot pay the teacher for that day.
Right.
So, and, and by the way, the other six states are very conservative states. You know, so we've talked a lot about, in California, which is supposed to be the most progressive state in the country, in many ways, we're the worst funded public school system. And I don't think it's, I, I don't think it reflects the values of Californians. Because every time we go to voters and ask, are you willing to invest in our schools, even if that means, you know, making some sacrifice yourself, paying a higher property taxes? The voters say yes. So I think the political will is really more, you know, leaders being willing to go to voters and ask the question. And, you know, we're also, as, you know, we've talked about in the past, California has had a number done on it over many, many decades by anti-tax activists who have inserted into the, you know, state constitution and to local rules about revenue increases, these supermajority requirements. It's, so we can go to the voters as we have four times in the time that I've been on the board and ask for an investment in, in, in school facilities through bonds. And those require a 55% threshold to pass. But if we went to voters and asked for a similar, you know, revenue measure to fund day-to-day classrooms, teachers, you know, counselors, supports in, in the classroom, we would need to get a two-thirds, you know, vote threshold to pass that. And so that's another, you know, kind of situation that mystifies people. I mean, I, believe me, I talk to teachers, parents, students all the time about, why do we have these beautiful facilities? Why are we always under construction? And yet we have, you know, we don't have enough special education aides in the classroom. And they're exactly right. But the answer to that is because we can go and pass facilities bonds at 55%. And we have, and, and, and that speaks, I think, again, to the willingness of San Diegans to invest in, in our schools.
Yeah, we really lead the country in that.
We really do, yes. But if we were to ask, you know, would you be willing, you know, in the same way to raise your property taxes to support, you know, having more teachers in the classroom, more counselors? That would require a two-thirds threshold.
Is it, is it the concept of, of not paying a salary? Is it, is it that? Is it, is it, is it this, this provincialism, for lack of a better term, kind of statewide around, oh, if I, if I, my property taxes or whatever taxes go up, and that money is, that revenue is used for, for additional staff, that somehow that would be wasteful?
I don't think there is actually a rationale to it other than, you know, people who don't want, frankly, to pay taxes for anything. And, and those are organized groups, you know, with a lot of money, have been over, again, going back decades, beginning with Prop 13, but since Prop 13, have been able to insert requirements that, that mean you can have 65% of voters say, we want to invest in our schools. And because you don't have 67%, that measure fails. And, I mean, I certainly consider that undemocratic.
Right.
But that, those are the rules, you know, that exist in California. And, and those rules can be undone, you know, through voter initiatives. There's a measure on the ballot this fall, not related to schools, but related to city governments, county governments, for instance, being able to go to voters to ask for measures to build housing. And that would change that threshold from two-thirds down to 55%. So that's on the ballot this year. I hope that passes. Because every time, you know, people say, we've got an affordable housing crisis in California, and they're exactly right, and, you know, are my kids gonna be able to afford to, you know, live in San Diego? Well, we've got an opportunity to do something about that if we make it more possible for local governments to be able to go to voters and say, are you willing to invest in the creation of affordable housing? So that's on the ballot this year, and I, and I hope, you know, I hope that passes.
So speaking of housing and affordable housing, and I know San Diego is among, if not the most expensive city, it's among the most expensive cities in the nation now. And I think we're, we're neck and neck with New York and San Francisco, which is amazing if, if you've been here as long as I have and you remember how things were 30 years ago.
Yeah.
But San Diego Unified has really taken the lead in, in affordable housing for staff.
Yep.
Talk to us a little bit about what has happened to date and what the plans are.
Yeah, so we, as a school district, own property that can be used to build affordable housing for educators. And actually, there was a study a couple of years ago by researchers at Berkeley and UCLA, which identified across California, school districts own 75,000 acres of land that can be developed into housing. And it's either land that might be used for administrative purposes, or it could be a large school campus with, with underused portions of that campus. But there's a lot of space on school district property that could be used to develop into housing. And going back now about eight years, there are a series of bills in Sacramento that make it easier for school districts to actually convert that, you know, underused property into, into affordable housing. And so in our district, as an example, the, what was the former Central Elementary School in City Heights? We had a large, again, underused campus for the middle school, Wilson Middle School that Central feeds into. And so what we did is we rebuilt both the Wilson Middle School and Central Elementary School on the same campus, consolidated that space. And that opened up the old property. And now we've got plans to build close to 300 units of affordable housing for educators at different income levels on that property in City Heights. We're actually hoping the, the site of our headquarters, our Normal Street Education Center, we're moving the headquarters up to Kearney Mesa, which is gonna free up 11 acres that we hope to develop into 500-plus units of affordable housing for educators. So we have a goal right now of getting, over the next, you know, decade, to about 10% of the employees in our district that we can house with affordable rents on properties that the, that the district owns.
So that would be rent, not own?
Yeah, I mean, there are models for homeownership. We don't want to sell the land.
Right.
There's models of sort of community land trust, you know, where we could retain the land and, you know, provide homeownership opportunities. But when the family is ready to sell their property, it sort of reverts back to the, yeah, to the, to the district, yes. But right now, the plans are for rental housing.
For rental.
And it's, you know, it's, the goal is that the employees in our housing would pay no more than 30% of their income on rent. We know there's a crisis in San Diego where so many people are paying more than half of their income on rent.
Right.
And particularly for, you know, newer employees, younger employees that are kind of getting their foot in the door, you know, kind of moving up the salary schedule, having that opportunity in your first five or so years, you know, to have an affordable place to live is really a critical strategy, like you say, for our, you know, our ability to recruit and retain employees in a high cost of living area like San Diego.
Yeah, it's amazing. It's as transformative as, you know, onsite daycare and things like that, right?
Yes.
For, for younger families and, you know, starting out in, in teaching. And I know that's been a model too.
Yes.
That's interesting. I, I really applaud the school board and administration for kind of taking that head-on. 10% is really ambitious.
Yes, it is. It is. And you're right. And, you know, it would, you know, this is where I think, you know, at San Diego Unified, and there are other districts that are doing this as well. But this is, this is sort of the best of us because we don't sit back and say, we've got a housing crisis and that's somebody else's problem to solve for us. You know, we say, well, what can we do to contribute to solving that crisis? And it turns out, there's a lot that we can do.
So speaking of, you know, kind of hot button issues, cellphone restrictions and bans.
Yeah.
So just for listeners, kind of setting the, the, the stage here a little bit, there's been legislation on the books for a number of years already allowing LEAs to, to restrict cellphone usage on campus. But now there's pending legislation that would mandate a ban or, or a restriction policy, if I understand it correctly.
Yes.
And then LA Unified, as the 600,000 student, you know, elephant in the room, they jumped in ahead of everybody, and now they're at least talking about. I haven't seen anything in black and white, but they're talking about, yeah, we're gonna ban cellphone usage in class, outside of class, anytime on our campuses.
Yeah.
So with that landscape out there, where is San Diego Unified in these conversations? And where do you think this is trending?
Yeah, it's a, it's a conversation that's coming to, I'm sure, every school district.
We're having it too.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, so we haven't taken this issue up formally as a board, but I know we will. I know this will be a conversation. Los Angeles Unified announced that starting in the second semester of this year, the winter semester, students with some exceptions, when they come to school, they've got to put their cell phones in a pouch, and then they can pick them up, you know, at the, at the end of the day. My starting point, again, just speaking personally, because this is not, you know, a conversation that we've started as a board. I understand the impulse, you know, around cellphone bans. I do think that students have a level of distraction with cell phones that is beyond what we experienced, you know, when we were in school.
I had a calculator watch. A Casio. And the battery would always die.
That, no, that's exactly right. And, and even this generation of students has an experience in terms of their relationship with cell phones and social media that is different from their older siblings, you know, five years ago.
Right.
And, and part of that is intentional. Social media companies, without a doubt, target young people, and their goal is to addict young people. And I have no hesitation sort of comparing them in their predatory practices to tobacco companies, you know, or other entities that try to addict young people to their product, and they're successful. And, and if you're a young people and you're up against, you know, that level of money and, and power and, you know, ability to think through strategically, how to addict me, that's tough. You know, you're, you're, so I understand all of that, and I think it's very real. I do think that a policy like, you know, banning cell phones across the board at all schools during the school day has to be done carefully, and it has to include communication with teachers, with parents, and with students.
Yeah.
And, you know, so the conversations that I've had with students so far, and I've had, you know, several conversations around this idea of banning cell phones, is pretty nuanced, you know, for, the kids are not naive. They're not, it's not that they don't understand the degree to which cell phones, social media can be distracting and beyond distracting, you know, contributing to mental health issues. Students understand that frankly, better than we do as adults. They also understand things that we may not understand as adults. So for instance, you know, I've had students that tell me, if you as adults are banning cell phones because you're trying to protect my mental health, well, there are some things that we would say should come first. So do we have enough counseling support at our school? Do we have wellness centers that we've got access to? You know, is there really that kind of, you know, level of support for mental health? Because if we don't have that.
Yeah.
A lot of us use our cell phones as kind of a substitute, you know? So there might be wellness apps, you know, on the phone that when we're getting really, you know, stressed or anxious about something, it's what, you know, the phone is what we use. And we're not saying that's the best way to deal with it, but if there's nothing else.
Yeah.
You know, and so I think that's important. And, and students will also, you know, kind of voice, look, we are growing up in a world where we understand that technology is more pervasive, faster, more overwhelming, intentionally so. So we better learn how to be prepared, you know, to, to live in a society where that's the case because that's our future. So rather than take the phones away from us, equip us, you know, to deal with the fact that whether it's a cellphone today or whatever the form of technology is gonna be a few years from now, the same dynamic of, you know, big, powerful, you know, companies trying to addict us, you know, to their product, we're gonna have to deal with that our whole lives. And so we've got to deal, we've got to learn. And so we've got to deal, we've got to learn how to deal with that in school. And I've heard from students who say, yeah, take them away, you know, and it would be better. And and then we can actually do more work during the school day. And then we're not going to be up late at night doing our homework because, you know, we've been playing on our cell phones. So students are all over the place on this conversation. But it's important, I believe, to include them on the front end in this conversation rather than to just, you know, pass a blanket policy that affects them directly without their voice.
Do you know where, and I mean, I think to use the term labor is is a is a an oversimplification of a very nuanced grouping of of agencies. But where would teachers' unions in general come down on this? Because on the one hand, it would seem that, you know, anything that preserves focus, peace, tranquility in the classroom
Yeah.
should be a positive. But on the other hand, if not implemented correctly, all you're doing is creating innumerable opportunities for conflict between adults and kids.
And I've heard that a lot and I'm sure you've heard it too, David, you know, sort of from it. If so, from the classroom teacher's perspective.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, it'll go, you know, I've heard classroom teachers who will say, I want, and there are many classroom teachers, of course, who do say, when you walk into my class, put your cellphone in in a bucket.
Right.
And I'll give it back to you at the end of the, you know, class and that's a policy. But even those teachers will often say, but I'd rather that the district just, you know, passes the policy than forces me, you know, to be the person, you know, to develop that policy. However, what you're also saying is correct because if as a classroom teacher, what this ends up doing for me is putting me in a situation where I've got to be disciplining students. Because let's face it, students are, there's no end to how smart young people can be.
Yeah.
And if you say, when you walk into school, put your cellphone in a pouch, that doesn't mean you don't have another one in your backpack.
Or a watch.
Watch or something like that. And so now if I'm a classroom teacher and, you know, I notice that a student is violating the policy, now I'm in a disciplinary relationship with that student and that's not what I want either. So again, I think this is not a, you know, easy solution that a school board can make without listening to those voices as well, classroom teachers and parents, you know, who will want to weigh in, you know, on 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 these these questions also.
It seemed to move pretty quickly. It went from the Surgeon General
Yeah.
to, you know, I know our governor was saying, hey, if anything comes to my desk on this, I'm signing it, you know, and I, you know, again, the devil's in the details on this.
Yes.
Right? It's the little pieces. It's and it's it's not accurate to call it a cellphone ban policy because it just, the way at least the legislation is drafted now, and it obviously hasn't passed, but
Yeah.
is that it would require boards to enact policy to restrict and or ban.
Yeah.
So, you know, restrict could mean a lot of things.
Yeah.
As you mentioned, and I I think about what we're going to run into all these discussions, endless discussions from parents and, you know, assertions that are assertions rather that 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 kids need these for safety.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I don't know of active shooter situation that was somehow foiled by 2,000 people having their cell phones.
Right, right.
I know of situations that are made much more complicated by 2,000 text messaging, phone call cell phones, right?
Yes.
So it's going to be an interesting.
Yeah, I mean, look, it's whatever happens in whatever district that we're in will likely mean pretty significant change from the way things have been over the last few years. And as we know, often when you change a situation, the first thing that people think about is all the things that could go wrong.
Right.
And because you haven't experienced, you know, the benefits or the positive, you know, aspect of change. But I also think it's never a good idea to just simply impose change by fiat.
Right.
You have to give people a chance to be part of the conversation. Often the best ideas emerge, you know, when people have a chance to be part of the part of the conversation. So I think in our district, the 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 one thing, even though I am sympathetic, and and again, like you say, you know, the Surgeon General, I mean, the the health risks associated with, you know, young people's exposure to social media through their phones or through other tools is well documented. And I I'm sympathetic to that and I understand that. I just think it's important that the way we do this in our district is respectful and inclusive and doesn't leave people feeling like we just, you know, sort of changed their world without there being part of that.
Do you see a similar approach is necessary for the conversation around AI?
Absolutely.
I know I I was reading some interviews with you or the local online newspaper did where they were asking you about kind of whether your district has a policy and it seems like there's not really yet a board approved policy, correct?
There's not. There's not a, there's not a board approved policy or even a, I think a consistent strategic approach as a district to AI. And I think it's something that we, again, have to get into and and that's a process that has to involve a lot of different stakeholders because that conversation, you know, its starting point can be all over the place.
Right.
Often that starting point, you know, is around, are students cheating? By using AI, for instance, in a in a writing assignment. And the teachers that I talk to, that's, again, that's not the the converse, that they don't want to be in a relationship where they're trying to figure out whether a student cheated or didn't cheat. So, you know, a lot of really thoughtful teachers will say, you know, if I get an essay and it seems to, you know, have been at least partly generated by AI, what I do is I ask the student a lot of follow up questions, you know? Okay, you've you've surfaced some interesting ideas here. Now go back and write about those ideas and come back to me and it's a, you know, and again, it's, you know, you talk about the, you know, sort of the calculator watch. And I know that some people reject this comparison, but yeah, when we were in school, we were sort of at the tail end of a debate around calculators.
Right.
And if you introduce calculators, does that mean that students will just never learn how to do math? And I think most people today would say, no, there are operations that, you know, a calculator is able to expedite, which allows a student to actually get to the higher order thinking, you know, around math. And I think, you know, that's possible, you know, with with AI as well. And I also think, you know, there are many young people and by this, I mean, people in their college students today or, you know, people out of out of high school who are working, who use AI all the time. And, you know, they consider it just, you know, that's, that's how I generate, you know, whether I'm writing an email or whether I'm writing a research paper, you know, I'll start there. So, you know, there's a lot as always to be concerned about. And and my starting point is any tech, you know, entrepreneur who runs around saying they're here to save the world. My, you know, skepticism, beginning skepticism is you're here to make a lot of money.
Right.
And 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 often that means if you can make money by screwing up the world, you'll do it. So I'm not starting with, you know, this sort of glossy, you know, vision of technology is somehow, you know, is going to is going to make the world a better place. It can at times make the world a better place and it can and it can at times make the world a worse place. And so in a public school district, that's an opportunity in a democratic, you know, society for us to come together and say, yeah, but what are our societal values, you know, that we want to have guardrails, you know, in place for? That's where the, that's, you know, it's that, it's that democratic conversation about what is actually best, you know, for our young people. And it's not getting caught up in the hype of the latest tech companies saying that they're going to somehow, you know, make everything better.
I feel optimistic about AI in general.
Yeah.
In schools, I think that it's going to show us that we, that it's going to bring out the humanity. Because as you say, if you're wondering if your student wrote this, just sit down and have a conversation with him about the topic.
Yes.
I mean, I could take AI and pass the MCAT.
Right.
But in like the first half hour that I'm in organic chemistry.
Yes.
They're going to know.
And let's hope you never get to, you know.
Holding the scalpel.
Exactly. That's right. That's right.
So, so, you know, that's, that's it, right, is like, and AI can't do bedside manners.
Yes.
And it can't tell, it can't talk to a person, you know, a family member of someone who's ill.
Yes.
And, you know, it can't, so on the other hand, there's some really efficient ways that it can synthesize information.
That's right.
And I think our our students should learn that.
Absolutely.
And I, you know, I was kind of chuckling because because the district was taking a little bit of heat in this article about not having a policy, but this is moving so quickly.
It is.
I mean, it seems like every day there's a new tool.
Of course there is. And that's and that's where I think, again, it's fair for the community to have an expectation of the district and of the school board that we will have a conversation about this. We will, you know, have a community process that does develop some clear thinking about what our strategy and approach is. Because otherwise, without that, it's whatever latest, you know, kind of whiz bang thing that's being sold to the district might sound good to somebody. And the next thing we've got contracts with, you know, different vendors and we're all over the place. Yeah.
And it's, and right now we're in the, we're in the 1.0
Yes.
version, right, of everything. So everything is being, now that ChatGPT is out there, everything's piggybacking on top of it.
Yes.
I've been experimenting with this device called Applaud, P L A U D. This is, they're not a sponsor. We have no sponsors. But P L A U D is a, is a credit card sized device that is a recorder.
Okay.
And it syncs to a cloud platform that runs on ChatGPT.
Okay.
And so you can point this thing down in a meeting, flick the button, record, it captures everything that you're talking about. And then you can throw it up there in the cloud and put it into a meeting template.
Yes.
And it'll actually, in the notes, it'll put your action items and to do and so, but it's not perfect.
Right.
And so you still need a human to go in and do it, but it save, it could save.
Of course.
That would take an hour of of me or someone else writing it down and we're going to miss things. And so
Of course, yeah.
But you also can't blindly go in and go, oh, ChatGPT said to do this. I'm just going to email it out to everybody.
And then and then everybody knows what happened at the meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. So there's that that human piece that comes in. And it's still not a substitute for being in the room.
It can't be. Yeah.
You know.
I mean, look, I mean, if we ever needed a lesson in why we need to be in the room together, I think, you know, the virtual schooling during COVID gave us that lesson. Because there are a lot of people, you know, who are, as we know, for a long time, who are saying remote learning is the answer, you know, that that's the magic bullet that's going to, you know, solve education. And I think we saw what happened when people are not together in relationships, students in relationships with each other and relationships with adults. And so all of this is, it's really, is the technology a tool that we control, that we're clear about for our purposes of building community, of empowering students? Or is it a tool that's controlling us?
Right.
Yeah.
And to date, and this may change and it, you know, these language learning models, they learn and they are, I'm seeing they're improving, but to date, they don't do nuance.
Right.
So I've had podcasts, for example, where I'll say, well, not for you because I know you, but for people I don't know, I'll say, hey, come up with 10 podcast interview questions for this person. This is their website. Boom. And it'll, it'll generate 10 questions, but of the 10, I'd only want to ask one or two. The basic
Yes.
kicking off the conversation ones. And then after that, they're just not nuanced. They're not interesting.
Yes, yes.
So it just feels like, okay, you you go on a news and we've all been those of us who, like you, you get interviewed all the time. You can tell when the interviewer actually took some time to know about the issue.
That's right.
Or they're just kind of free riffing and going, so Mr. Barrera, tell me about, you know, and it's like, it's not interesting.
I mean, one thing that we know of about human interaction is when two people or 20 people or 40 people get in a space together and start having a conversation, things evolve from where people were at when they walked into that room. And and so that's something that I think, you know, that form of technology has a real hard time doing. Because sure, it could generate, you know, some, like you say, pretty, you know, rote conversation pieces to kick off a conversation. But then what happens when people actually start to get to know each other and start to explore ideas together? Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the human part.
That is, that's, I'm looking forward to seeing what the district comes up with in terms of a policy. If even if you come up with a formal one or not.
Right.
We have a AI working group.
Yeah.
And they've been kind of tracking this for the past year and meeting and reading books and getting smart about it. But in the month or two between the meetings, you know, the train moves on.
Sure.
So the next meeting, you're talking about something that's almost passe.
That's right.
That's kind of how quickly.
That's right. And that's a great point, David. I mean, whatever, whatever policy, you know, strategy approach that we take at any point in time is going to change and it should change.
I was recently reviewing the our staff handbook and there was a piece in there that I'm sure had not been updated in 20 years.
Yes.
Because it was expectation for classroom teachers and it said, before you show a movie in your classroom, check with administration, have administration watch the videotape prior, something along those lines. Clearly from the VHS days, you know.
Right.
You know, and so somehow we'd missed that in our annual updates of the policy. But yeah, things move along and that was
Yes.
Netflix took a long time to impact culture compared to this.
Absolutely. No, that's exactly right. Yeah.
And so it's moving faster and faster. I I want to pivot and and I want to kind of wrap today with a some questions about a topic that's a sobering topic for anyone who works in schools and and just anyone who's human, which is active shooter, active shootings on campuses. And I know that the district has some really clear safety guidelines in the renovations of campuses and single point of entry, fences that are of a certain height, all these pieces. Recently, there was an article about a school in San Diego. We don't need to say the name, but they allegedly had run an active shooter drill that in some capacity included the sound of gunshots and sirens. Whether that was intentional or not is, we'll never know. I wasn't there. Was it radio interference or something else? But suffice to say, traumatic for anyone who heard the radio transmission. Subsequent to that, we have a local assembly member, Ward, who is proposing legislation to kind of put some bumpers and guidelines around active shooter drills on campuses. Turns out that the research on the effectiveness of active shooter drills is kind of mixed, right? In terms of risk versus reward, re-traumatizing versus educating and empowering.
Yes.
Where does San Diego Unified come down on that from a board level? And and I'd like, love to hear your thoughts on that topic.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, you know, a couple of years ago, we had an event at San Diego High School and and there were a lot of, it was actually representatives from the Padres were there and, you know, different people from the community were there having, you know, a conversation with the students in the auditorium. And the alarm went off and the principal announced over the intercom, we were in a lockdown. And that meant everybody had to stay where they're at. And there were probably 200 or so students in the room. And one of the sobering, you know, experiences that I had with that was the students, this had become everyday life.
Routine.
Routine. Routine. The adults were freaking out.
Right.
You know, the Padres player was saying, I gotta get to practice. But but that experience, again, you know, the difference of what daily experience, what real life means to a young person is compared to, you know, what a lot of us grew up with is, you know, it is, it's, it is, it is something that, you know, makes you realize. Because I wouldn't say that that group of students at San Diego High School or any students, it's not that they are now just somehow immune. It just means that's a level of chronic stress, you know, that they live with, that I think is is something that's hard for, you know, people from, you know, older generations to really appreciate. That, you know, if you ask students about sort of what their number one concerns are at school, particularly among high school students, this will usually rise to the top, you know. What do I do if, you know, we end up in an active shooter situation? You know, I I I never would have thought about that as a, you know, as a student in high school.
We had fire drills.
We have fire drills, we had.
No one took them seriously.
Earthquake drills, right?
I'm from New York, so we didn't.
Dumb thing to do, right?
Stop, drop and roll.
And roll, yeah, all those kinds of things. So I I do think it's real and I I appreciate Assembly Member Ward for looking at this and saying, well, wait a second. We all want to protect the, you know, safety of our students. But are we going too far in a way that we're actually increasing that trauma in students and and sort of preparing for these drills? And I think there's, you know, I think there's a balance there, even, you know, this is one of those reasons why I've always thought it's a bad idea to put metal detectors, you know, at school, to have a lot of those types of, you know, kind of security strategies. Because it probably actually makes the school less safe. You know, if if students start to have an experience where they think that adults don't trust them or that you're creating this sort of almost sort of fortress, you know, atmosphere, I think it can, the the impact, and we've seen a lot of research that backs this up, like you say, that all that does is add to students, you know, stress and mental health issues. So it's, yes, we need to do everything we can, you know, to both on a physical level, on training, in in terms of, you know, communication, you know, be as prepared as we possibly can be for this reality. But if we turn that into a situation where students are just really anxious to go to school and to be at school, then I think we've gone too far the other way. And, you know, David, you know, you know, I, you know, talked about this, it's for anybody who thinks that we solve the problem of school shootings with these kinds of safety, you know, training, you know, strategies at school and ignore the fact that people have access to those weapons. They're either incredibly naive or they're frankly in the pocket of the gun manufacturers. And we talk about political will. We've got too many people, too many elected officials in this country who are willing to sacrifice the safety of young people because they don't want to get on the wrong side of the NRA and the gun manufacturers. People in this country do not need to be walking around with access to assault weapons, period. And when they do have access to assault weapons, they're gonna show up at school campuses and it's gonna threaten the safety of our kids.
The fascinating thing about that, you know, horrifying reality is that the NRA has like recently collapsed as an organization, you know, just through mismanagement and otherwise, but the that didn't weaken the cause.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, I think Pennsylvania was one example of, you know, that's, that was an AR-15 that the kid
No, absolutely.
Dad thought he was going to target practice that day.
And again, there's too many examples of other countries that have sensible gun policies that ban these, you know, assault weapons and that don't see the level of gun violence that we see in this country. And so again, it's, you know, we've talked about sort of the the predatory, you know, outlook on the world, the technology companies have, you know, towards young people. Well, I don't know how somebody who promotes, you know, the idea that people in our society should have access to these kinds of weapons, I don't know how they sleep at night, I don't know how they look at themselves in the mirror. Because Sandy Hook had all of those policies in place. Single point of entry, perimeter fencing, training of staff, all of that. And we saw what happened there. And it's because those guns are are too available in our in our society.
The Secret Service obviously has a vested interest and sometimes they make mistakes. But they have a vested interest in in trying to anticipate mass shooting incidents and trying to profile, and there really is no, the only profiling thing they've ever been able to do is by gender.
Right.
That's the only overwhelming thing. Other than that, it's it's pretty, it seems, it appears to be pretty random.
Yes.
But they conclude every time they do these longitudinal studies that one of the most important elements in keeping a community safe is to have a community that where people know each other and care about each other.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, a head up and greeting and and to me, it's just, it's so simple, it's not always easy.
Not always easy.
We're all going a million miles an hour, if we're staring at our phone, we're not doing that either.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so, but what a, what a simple but elegant
Yeah.
human solution, or not a full solution, but it's something, right? To know who's who, who is there, who's in your community, who's having a hard time.
Yeah.
Now, I think it gets back to even the importance of teachers greeting students at the door of classrooms.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, which is, I was, who was I speaking to? So one of the podcast guests, we talked about, maybe it was Hetty Chang, who who statewide does a lot of work on chronic, yeah, attendance, chronic absenteeism. She's kind of become the statewide guru.
Yeah.
Fascinating. And and she talks about, hey, I'd love to do research on the impact of greeting students at the door on student wellbeing and academic achievement. So what if we did that at the front door of our campus too?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's, you know, it's everything, it's, you know, we've talked about this, it's anybody who comes to work every day wants to be in a community, wants to be, you know, feel like those people who care whether I'm there or not, you know, people who know me, people who value me. Young people need that more than anybody. And so, yeah, this, the schools that create the best, again, it's like you say, it's, I think it's a simple and powerful strategy for anything that we want to achieve in our schools. If you have a stronger school community where kids feel like they're connected, they're gonna do better. Academically, they're gonna, you know, their self-confidence is gonna grow, their leadership, their, you know, their belief in themselves is gonna grow. It's, it's a place that teachers want to teach at, you know, it's a place that parents want to feel connected to, and it just makes the school better in every way. You're exactly right, that's the, and so, you know, when we think about, you know, in terms of the way that we want to set up systems and policies in our schools, I do think the number one focus should always be, does the policy, does the system facilitate those genuine relationships between people at school? And if it does, a lot of things are gonna are gonna get better. If it gets in the way of those genuine relationships, however well intentioned, it's probably gonna fail even in its own objectives.
And I think it also, there's no way to isolate or separate what happens on campuses with what happens in society.
You can't.
If we're polarized outside of campus and we create an oasis, it's not gonna hold up.
That's right.
And so this is really that collective work.
That's right.
That never ends.
That's, that that never ends, yeah. I bet, and you're right, it, we can't create oases, but but schools are the vehicle that allow people from all different backgrounds and experiences daily and, you know, over generations to come together, get to know each other, appreciate each other, believe in each other and and then our society gets better, you know, as as a result of that. It's, it's the, it's the genius of the idea that we have in our community, these places that we bring young people together. And they learn together and they get to know each other and it's free and and it's and everybody, you know, gets to be there and everybody actually has to be there.
Yeah, I, you know, obviously when we're kids, we sometimes have this notion, ah, I gotta go to school, I can't wait till till June 15th or whatever. But now as I get older, the other day I was reflecting back.
Yeah.
If I go back to my first day of preschool, let's say, I don't know what I was for or something, to now.
Yeah.
I've had 50 years of the first days of school. A half a century between between my schooling all the way up through and then college, et cetera, and then professionally, I'm thinking, I've spent half a century
Doing this.
Doing this first day of school. And what a gift.
Yes, and that, that, that's so great, that's a great way to.
Right, the refresh, the, the, the re, the refreshing of a new year and you know the challenges you're gonna have.
Yeah.
But you're ready to take them on and some seem like they're the same challenges from 30 years ago and others are completely new.
That's right.
Thirty, when I started my career, when you started your career, neither of us owned a cell phone.
That's right.
So, or AI or, you know, or, you know, and fortunately, active shooter wasn't even in the vernacular before Columbine.
Right.
You know, so it's interesting how this profession has so much to give
Yeah.
to all of us and to our kids, it's, I I just feel very grateful.
Yes.
And I I wanted to thank you again for coming in and for for supporting the work and and I think I'd be remiss if I didn't just mention that, you know, we're, we're gonna be doing a ribbon cutting on a phase one of many phases on elementary campus and thanks to just a great collaboration with the district that we talked about in the last podcast, right? Where brand new state of the art building for for kids, like
So.
Whether they're in a charter school, a district school, it doesn't even matter.
Yeah, doesn't matter, there, there, there are young people. They've got an opportunity to to now learn in state of the art facilities. And all of us as San Diegans should be proud because all of us, you know, made that happen.
Yeah, and we'll be seeing a you, you and I, I think are both, unless they cut mine out, which they probably should have, will be on the news in a couple of days.
Okay, talking about that.
Talking about that, right, profiling, I know you're gonna be in that story as well to some capacity, so. I really wanted to thank you, Richard, for your time this afternoon, for your generosity, I know you're busy. You got a lot of stuff going on and you don't have a staff too, so. I know you have a lot of work, so thank you so much.
Thanks, David, thanks as always, yeah.
Thank you for listening to the Superintendent's Hangout. You can follow me on Twitter at DVS1970. Please be sure to share this show with friends and family on social media and in the real world. Thank you to Brad Bakayal for editing and production assistance and to Tina Royster for scheduling and logistics. Thanks for hanging out and have a great day.